Good afternoon and welcome to our last meeting of September. We appreciate it. We have a fairly large size of folks in our council chambers and we welcome you guys and also those of you watching us on our Electric City Television. Our invocation tonight would be given by Councilmember Steve Curvin and in respects to the flag, would be my Councilmember Tony Stewart. Please rise.
Let us pray. Dear God, we are thankful that we live in a land of freedom where meetings of this type can take place. We ask for your guidance and for your blessing on this body. Please help us remember at all times that when we sit in these seats, we speak as a government and not as individuals. And in doing so, help us always to honor and respect the rights and liberties of every individual subject to the jurisdiction of this government. Help us make reasoned and fair decisions in all that we do. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into the body of our meeting, I'm gonna ask Chief Stewart to come up. We have several swearing-in ceremonies for his officers. Chief?
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'd like to swear in seven new officers and six of these officers are probably what I consider to be our largest academy class we've had down at Criminal Justice Academy. They were all six together at the academy, starting out, graduated on May 30th, and then a few short weeks ago, they have just completed their field training officer program. So basically, they've been cut loose out on the street and they're by themselves now. That with the one exception, Officer, we have hired from Greenville City. And I'd ask Officer Ben Cawthorn to come down. Just make his way behind me here. Officer Cawthorn is an eighty-seven graduate of Pendleton High School, also from Landry University, and also as recently in two thousand and seven, graduated from the Command College at Anderson University. Prior to coming to Anderson, he worked for the city of Greenville, was a uniform patrol, crime response team, Beck Middle School, and was also a member of the SWAT team. Currently, he works at our agency as school resource officer. Our next officer, who is one of our recent graduates, Officer Danny McCowen is our next officer. He's from Greenville, South Carolina. His parents have both worked in the public safety career field. He's always wanted to be a police officer and worked as a dispatcher at MedShore and hospital security at AnnMed prior to coming to the police department. And Danny, I believe you have some special guests here tonight also.
My father, Don McCowen, my mother, my wife, and my son, Jerry.
Yes, very good.
Okay. Officer Dustin Morgan is next. Officer Morgan was raised in Anderson. He is a two thousand and six graduate of Crescent High School. After high school, he attended the fire academy and began working at the fire department. And he served as a fire department engineer. He started working for the Anderson Police Department in two thousand and eleven as a reserve officer and worked full-time before coming to Alpha Ship.
Have some guests here tonight, I believe, also.
Yeah.
Our next officer here is Cornelius Pickens. He's from Westside High School. He was a dispatcher for the Anderson County Sheriff's Office for five years and has been in the fire service also for eight years. In addition to his patrol shift, he's worked part-time for MedShore, which he started at age sixteen. Our last officer here is Officer Nick Williamson. He's a graduate of Crescent High School, began his law enforcement career in two thousand and eleven. He started with us as a Class One certification and began working for patrol in June of that year. He also works on Alpha Ship. Thank you, Mayor.
This is a photo session. Why don't we get Chief's face?
If all officers would raise their right hand, repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Take your time.
Aye, Nick Williamson.
I'm being duly appointed as police officer of the city of Anderson.
Being duly appointed a police officer of the city of Anderson.
And a peace officer of the state of South Carolina.
And a peace officer of the state of South Carolina.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will defend?
That I will defend.
Obey?
Obey.
And enforce the Constitution?
And enforce the Constitution.
Of this state?
Of this state.
And of the United States?
And of the United States.
Ordinances of the city of Anderson?
The ordinances of the city of Anderson.
That I will protect the rights?
That I will protect the rights.
Lives?
Lives.
And property of all citizens?
And property of all citizens.
And uphold the honor?
And uphold the honor.
Of the police?
Of the police.
Profession with my life?
Profession with my life.
If need be?
If need be.
I do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
Thank you. Congratulations, because we're having you onboard.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
One of our finest, thank you, sir.
Forward of heaven.
Congratulations.
Appreciate you being one of our finest.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Appreciate it. Congratulations.
Welcome aboard. Don't be in trouble later on. I'm going to, at this time, we have a economic development announcement and I'm gonna ask Mr. Moore to make that announcement for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a great day in the electric cities. We get the opportunity to recognize the city's new Director of Economic Development. He's down to my left, Mr. Glenn Bree. Glenn, you stand up. A little bit about Glenn, we're certainly pleased to have him as part of our team. But Glenn's held positions in Oconee County as Assistant Administrator, in Spartanburg as Administrator. He's a graduate of the Leadership South Carolina Program, the South Carolina Executive Institute. He served on the Economic Futures Group Board of Directors in Spartanburg County, which is an arm of the Spartanburg Chamber of Commerce with their sole mission being to retain existing industry and bring new industries to Spartanburg. He was also recently involved in Oconee County as they created and consolidated an Economic Development Department, and certainly, he brings those skills here. The other thing about Glenn, we're bringing him home. He is a graduate of T. Ohana High School. I learned today that Councilman Loffridge taught him, a former McCants, so we know he has a good educational background. And again, Glenn attended Anderson University and graduated from Landry University in nineteen eighty-eight. I know he's excited. We put him through it today, but he's going through all the formalities. Expect a call from Glenn. He'd like to sit with you, learn a little bit more about your perspectives and ideas for our community, but we're really excited to this day. This is culmination of two years of your retreats, to look at how the city of Anderson can be proactive in controlling its own destiny going forward. So this is a big day for our community and our city. Glenn, we welcome you.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
You said it all.
Okay. Thank you.
The minutes of our September eighth meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing any. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
First by Dr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Horvath. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That was pretty weak, but it passes. Maybe we liven up before he... Yes. The minutes of September eighth passed unanimously. Glenn has already had effect on elected officials. We don't have any old business. We do have several items of new business, and our first item of new business is... The first two items are planning commission referrals, but I'll read both of them if that's okay. Request consideration of referral of the planning commission. A petition to rezone approximately fifteen acres generally in the West Franklin Street-Doolie Avenue area from RM ten multifamily residential to a planned development district. And the second is a request consideration of a referral to the planning commission, a petition to rezone thirteen forty-one East River Street from RM ten multifamily residential to GC General Commercial. Mr. Moore?
Just a couple of comments so the public will know what is coming forward. In the case of the first one, it is a proposed eighty units. This is the Homes for Hope. This is formerly the Hanover Ridge site that's next to the Westside Community Center. Pleased to say that the folks from Homes for Hope have met with Dr. Thompson and her community, and this process has evolved over some time. We'll continue to meet with her as it goes forward. The second one is actually in Councilman Stewart's area, and this was formerly a laundromat that will be, if it rezones, will become part of the Housing Authority as it grows to accommodate office and other related spaces. And I know the folks in the Housing Authority have spoken with Councilmember Stewart, so both of our councilmembers in these districts are onboard, and these will be heard at the Planning Commission on October the seventh. But we'd recommend you refer both of them.
Great, thank you. Let's take, we'll do two votes, but let's tackle the first one.
I make a motion that we give this to the planning.
First by Mr. Roberts, Buck Roberts.
Second.
Second by Matt Horvath. All those in discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously to the planning commission. Take item number two.
Make a motion that we refer to the planning commission.
First by Mrs. Stewart.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? They both pass unanimously to the planning commission. Our third item of new business, request consideration of a resolution approving a mutual aid agreement and contract for services between the city of Anderson's Police Department and Clemson University. Mr. Moore?
In case you have any questions, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'll ask Chief Stewart if he'll make his way down, but kind of the bottom line is you have currently in place somewhere around twenty or thirty mutual aid agreements with various cities or counties in the area. These agreements would be for either us or them to come help each other normally in the case of natural disaster, disorder, or some other emergency situation. The one with Clemson University is a little bit different in that they have special events. Those can be everything from football games, concerts, and they have requested the assistance of some of your officers. We believe this is good for our officers. It gives them a chance for some second income in this arena and also helps our neighbors in Clemson. So really with that, it's pretty much a standard agreement that the city attorney has reviewed and passed those out. So we would recommend that you approve the resolution. You certainly can ask Chief Stewart and...
We've done these a couple times over the past few years, and it's always a good thing. Mr. Stewart?
I guess, I guess we have done these in the past with Belton, Honey Path, Williamson, you know, for a mutual aid agreement, but I guess I see this one as a little bit different because it's one, it's a mutual aid agreement, but then the second part of it is a contract for services at Clemson Special Events, which could be Clemson football games, it could be concerts, it could be baseball games, and, you know, so I don't think we're doing that in other jurisdictions, so this is a little bit different than what we've been doing in the past. And I guess my only concern would be is that I know within the last couple years, we've started allowing officers to take home vehicles, and this is going to... I don't know how much they're gonna work, you know. You figure you got submate home football games and you're going back vehicles, and we have a budget for our gas mileage for our vehicles, and depending on how much overtime, how is this gonna impact that budget, the wear and tear on the vehicles, because this is something totally different than hadn't been discussed before, because right now, our policy is to and from work. And right now, this is a second job outside, but again, the wear and tear and the gas still falls back on the city taxpayers.
Let me address a little bit of it, and then I'll see if Chief and Captain would like to address further. We do try to provide opportunities for our officers to earn second incomes, and in most cases, they wear their uniform, use police cars, and anything certainly within the city. Because their jurisdiction is limited to the city limits, unless there is a mutual aid agreement, they don't have the opportunities that a county sheriff's deputy would have to work other events, even including Westside and Hannah football games, which are outside the city's jurisdiction. So Councilman Stewart, I would answer this way, yes, there is some additional cost, but it is a great retention tool and recruitment tool to get officers to come in. It keeps us competitive as well as helps our neighbors close by. Chief, you and Mike, you have anything else? Maybe a number of events under y'all already...
Yes, sir. I was talking with Captain Piccolini just then to review, make sure I was correct. Cars pretty much will be used to transport the officer to the field there for the football game. They'll be parked. They will not be running during the game. Our officers will strictly be working security there. So you're talking about a vehicle en route coming back home.
Yeah, I kind of understood that, but I just didn't know, you know, I know Clemson has a lot of events going on, and I would just ask that, you know, someone report back to the Public Safety Committee over, I guess, within six months to say, hey, this is what we've done in six months. I don't have a problem with approving it, but I think we really need to take a look on how much it's affecting the budget, if it affects it any whatsoever.
I know the immediate need is for the football season, so how about after the last game, we'll report back to the number of officers, the number of trips, hours, and mark the fuel consumption.
Sounds fair. Mr. Horvath?
Um, Mr. Moore, you said right now, the city doesn't, since both of them are outside the city, the local high school teams, is that something that we're looking into? I mean, do we provide any services for those local high school football games?
We do have that established in our contract with the School Resource Officer through District Five, that our SROs can provide security at either Westside or Hannah. Plun request to the superintendent.
I don't think, Councilman Harvath, I don't think we, we don't work in the football games or other activities. Those are generally reserved, and again, those are considered a benefit to sheriff's deputies to earn that extra income in close proximity within the county. So the county does handle all the security for the football games.
If I'd like to make a motion to approve this, Mayor?
First by Mr. Horvath.
Let me ask a question.
Let's get to second, and we've still been discussing. Second by Dr. Thompson. Mr. Curvin?
Can you tell me roughly how many officers from our department would be called to, say, a football game, for example, just a normal...
Captain Piccolini said six to ten officers depending on the game.
And that's all gonna be coordinated through?
Clemson University.
You, well, as our chief, to make sure we don't have any gap in coverage for what we have going on here in the city of Anderson?
Yes, sir. These will all be off-duty personnel.
But I mean, it could be times when, you know, it may be a significant event that you may have to call people in. How would that be addressed?
If we had a emergency here, we could recall those officers, even if they are at the university, we can recall them, and they would need to come back here.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Our next item of new business is request consideration of a resolution adopting the downtown bicycle and pedestrian connectivity plan. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that most of the council have seen this plan, if you dropped by the office and have seen it, but let me make just a few opening comments. This council's had a long history of plans, master plans for a number of things, recreation, downtown, neighborhoods, and housing, and they've all been about creating community enhancements. And the council has learned that these plans allow you to, over a period of time, make change, and these changes are extremely good and become an economic development tool. So it's just another tool for your economic development tool base when we talk about this downtown bicycling pedestrian connectivity plan. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank some of the people that have been involved closely with that, and I want to make sure I don't miss any. Bobby's back in the back, and Linda and Arlene, anybody else on our staff before I go to Blake? We've also been forced to have Blake Sanders back there with Bobby. Blake's been kind of the lead person for ALTA, but the nice part about Blake is he's a city council member in West Pelzer, so he understands municipal operations and has done a very nice job of communicating this plan to our community. Seems like that most of the meetings, they've been, the plans have been very well received, but to long and sure, this is, this is a bikeway and walkway connectivity plan for downtown, and they are, I think, five routes that are being considered, but they basically connect everything from the AnnMed North Campus, Anderson University, the Westside Community Center, the Anderson County Courthouse Annex, the City of Anderson Recreation Center, and the Transit Transfer Station. Those are some of the plans that will be able to connect to downtown. So again, I think most of you have seen it. I won't elaborate any further. We'd recommend that you approve this resolution and therefore adopt the downtown bicycling pedestrian connectivity plan. If you do, then we'll go about resolving the priorities of that plan and the funding of those plans. We work with your committee and staff, okay?
I know we had a special presentation at five. Is there anybody from that presentation that would like to make comment? Any council discussion?
Well, I think one point that needs to be emphasized is that, you know, this is a master plan. It's not like we're gonna go out tomorrow and do the entire plan. It'll be phased in over a fairly lengthy period of time.
Fifteen years is the plan time, Councilman Curvin. That's correct.
Well, one of the other things that needs to be emphasized also is the fact that we have, as part of the plan, a way for the highway department to come in, and when we redo a road, they would be able to utilize this plan to decide what to do with that road, and I think that's a smart way of moving.
Good point.
And in that term, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this, this plan.
First by Mr. Lockridge, second by Mr. John Roberts. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd like to thank everyone, including our team and the other citizens that were on our committee. I know the council has really been behind this, and also the Rec Department for their work in their Recreation Committee. I think that this day will be looked back in the past, in the future, as being an important day for the city of Anderson. Our last item of new business, request consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter fifty-eight, Section fifty-eight dash two of the Anderson City Code, providing for the qualifications of a municipal judge. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the way of background, you may remember back in the spring or summer, the Assistant Judge Hugh Belvern resigned for other, pursue of the interest, and so Judge Madison has been handling all the courts since that time. What we're trying to do is, as you know, we also have Donna Casey, and Donna's with us somewhere in the audience. At your, you contracted with Donna to help the judicial system move forward in a lot of organization, and actually, an integrated system, which will not only help the courts, but the citizens who have to come to courts, to the police officers, so their time and your overtime, and also prosecuting attorneys. So it's an integrated system we're looking at, and Donna probably needs thirty more days to look at that, and it may take you a little longer. In the meantime, the judge is trying to hold the court down by himself, and that's not good for him. It's not good for you if he were to not be able to make it. The Public Safety Committee met last week, and in an interim measure, and this will probably be adopted somewhere down the road in the final measure, they recommend, number one, we look at for the judge, a, excuse me, assistant judge, and right now, what this ordinance does, it waives this being an attorney, and so that you could go to the magistrate's office and find someone who is already duly qualified, familiar with the case management system, that could be an immediate help, still allows you to go through the process and appoint one or more assistant judges in the future. So, because that, that term is gonna expire, or Hugh's unfulfilled term will expire on June thirtieth. So it doesn't preclude anything. You get someone who can come in, do what needs to be done, and is familiar with the case management system. So the other part that we are also recommending is that we, we look at a ministerial recorder. We've had some interest. This would be a person that comes in at six o'clock in the morning and six in the evening, because the state law requires you have two bond hearings a day. Right now, the judge is doing that, and we're only doing one. He also has to come in on Saturday and Sunday and bond the people in the courts, so that would help him by getting those two people. Again, does it preclude that you appoint additional judges or additional ministerial recorders? Because I think the final recommendation from Donna will be for that. I think the final recommendation from Donna will be for that. And again, what this ordinance does is just allows another tool in the court system or your judiciary. Because again, even if we were... Had full-time judges like we've had in the past with Hugh and Ken, well, they both could become sick. And so this gives you the ability to put somebody from the magistrate's office who is qualified to run the courts in the meantime. Now, that's kind of my layman's term on that, and certainly Frankie has been involved with that along with the Public Safety Committee, Mr. Harbin, Mr. Stewart, and Mr. Curvin were at that meeting, and they certainly may want to add to where we're going. So this will be first reading on this, and it would just allow us by time of second reading, if you approve it, we're going to start the process of determining who might be interested in taking these positions.
Sounds good. Any comments from the committee? Ms. Stewart?
I'd just like to kind of reemphasize what Mr. Moore said, is that, yes, I think the committee, you know, realizes and sees the help that Judge Madison needs, and that's why upon, I think, Councilman Curvin brought it up, to try to get this ordinance changed so that we can get the immediate help, because there are a lot of magistrates in Nancy Devine's court who are not lawyers, but they are familiar with running a court and a case management where they can come in and give Judge Madison some help immediately. The only thing with the ministerial recorders, I know there's a little bit of a training process that has to go through for that, and I think one of the recommendations of the committee was, you know, if there are two people out there for the ministerial recorders, let's go ahead and get both of them trained at the same time instead of just doing one ministerial recorder. And I think there's been some interest in that, so we may have two, because one person coming in every morning, afternoon, and on the weekends, that's a lot. They want some time off, so maybe they could rotate weekends and rotate weeks, so that's the reason why we had looked at having possibly more than one, and Councilman Curvin and Councilman Harbin can correct me if I'm wrong, but those are some of the things that we talked about, but I think it's a step in the right direction.
Anything else, guys? Mr. Roberts?
How quickly could it help alleviate the backup and, you know, the judge?
I think if you pass it on first reading, it couldn't be final, but at least you will have expressed your wishes tonight, so we'll go ahead and make contact with Nancy Devine, see if there are any magistrates that would be interested, and have them readily available for your consideration, possible appointment immediately following the second, third reading, and possibly the same on the ministerial recorder. We do know, as Councilman Stewart said, there's a couple people, just because some of the news publicity, several people have expressed interest in both slots.
And to clarify, you know, we're talking about a temporary-type process here, as far as appointing these magistrates to come in and provide some immediate capacity that will help Ken and the court to have some more flexibility. So we'll go back to, you know, appointing in our normal fashion, once we kind of figure out how we want the court to look in, you know, the next year or two.
Mr. Harbin?
Because if... I just want to make sure, you know, to sort of piggyback what Mr. Curvin was saying, because if we hired a judge today, which we would still have to open it up for a period of time, if we hired one today before we could have him trained up and on the bench, it would take a considerable amount of time. So this is sort of what, and as to sort of the other fellow councilmembers, this is sort of, you know, the next best thing to get him some immediate help, so that it wouldn't prolong, you know, how long he's been having to work seven days a week.
Anything else?
I was just going to say, we need to give him some relief.
With that, I'd make a motion that we do that, Mayor.
And I second.
First by Mr. Harbin, second by the mayor pro tem. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously on the first reading. Thank you. Thank you, committee members. I'm turning it over to Mr. Moore.
On your agenda, the main thing for administrative briefing was the upcoming events, but we had some news come down today, and I'd like to share that with the council and the general public regarding the West Anderson lawsuit. The... I'll go ahead and get the good news out first. The judge has ruled completely in the City of Anderson's favor. The Tenth Circuit Judge, Circuit Court Judge, Judge R. Keith Kelly, he filed his order today. It is now recorded in the courthouse, deciding in favor of the City of Anderson in the lawsuit filed by... Lawsuit filed against the city by the West Anderson Water District. What that suit basically said was it asked the court to declare the city was not entitled to serve the new Michelin facility located on the property adjacent to the other Michelin facilities, and those facilities have been served by the city with potable water for more than a decade, since 2002, when the city purchased the system. West Anderson also asked that this be declared, the current service be declared unlawful and void. The court's findings stated that both claims asserted by West Anderson Water District should be dismissed without prejudice, and the city is entitled to have judgment entered in its favor and continue to serve these properties. Very good news for the City of Anderson. The question before the court centered on the terms of the 2002 agreement, so twelve years ago, the parties signed this agreement to buy the system from Duke, and after much negotiation and discussion, there was a clear, in our opinion, there was a clear territorial map, so that every one of the fourteen members knew what territories they were serving, and that we would avoid disputes, would avoid disputes like this, and the city insisted on that. And of course, the judge has since ruled that to be in our favor, and the court further noted that is considered from a perspective of common sense and good faith, that the parties intended when they entered the agreement in 2002. And given the court's findings, rulings, the court concluded the city is entitled to provide potable water, related services to the Michelin site as shown on the territory. So that's the full site, whether it's Michelin or some supplier of Michelin that may build on this site. I don't mind telling you, this was my quote in the press release, that we certainly are pleased with the favorable ruling, and just in the way of history, in 2002, when this negotiation was going on to make it happen, the City of Anderson stepped up, invested $2 million, over $2 million, in that line that ran down the 29, I guess, that served, provided infrastructure and water capacity for Michelin, BAS, and Owens Corning, and it allowed the city to serve those. The city insisted on the language in those agreements, because that's a major investment which the city was entitled to recoup over a period of time, and so again, we're very pleased that that was ruled on by the judge. I would say that, again, the specific language in that territorial map was to avoid future disputes, know who everybody serves, so you can make the proper financial investments to serve those people. And unfortunately, with the filing of the lawsuit, West Anderson Water District chose to try to ignore this consent that had been so purposely agreed on twelve years ago. That was very disappointing. City of Anderson has been and continues to be a good-faith member of the Anderson Regional Joint Water System, responsibly participating in a manner to help advance the water system for the economic good of the community. This is an unfortunate chapter in the history of the joint water system and the community. We hope this ruling brings to an end the litigation. We look forward to putting this issue behind us so that our time, dollars, and energies can be focused on producing the highest quality of water and the most reliable service possible. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I am pleased to announce that to the council and to the public and to our water customers and all water customers in the community.
Very good.
The only other thing I would mention is that on the calendar, September's about to conclude. This is your last meeting in September, the block party still continues on, but as we look forward into October, a couple, three things I would bring to your attention. The first full weekend October, specifically Tuesday, October the 7th, will be the city's Fresh Taste, and that's from 6:00 to 9:00 in the East Church Street parking lot. Again, we'll give you a little more information on that soon. The Anderson County Municipal Association will meet that Thursday, Pendleton, City of Towne or Pendleton will be the host, and then you look on down, a couple council meetings, block party continues through October, I believe, and then we'll have our third movie night at Carolina Rim Park on the October 14th, will be Harry Potter and the Sorcerer's Stone. So...
I'd just like to add an event to the calendar, if I might. On Saturday, October the 18th, is the City of Anderson Recreation Department, is their Bowl Day, where they have all their football teams playing at Old McCants. They have the home... They do the Homecoming King Queens for all the games there. There are probably over 2,000 people will be attending that, starting that morning, I think around 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock, probably a last of 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon, but it's always a huge event, you know, come October. This is the showcase of all the City of Anderson football teams, so I just want to put that on the calendar.
Thank you. Do we have executive session?
It should be short. What we'd like to do is, it's personnel matter, so we discussed the people that are involved in the court system. The judge and Donna are familiar, the committee is, but we would like to just take a few minutes to make sure you understand a little bit more specifically what will be transpiring for the court systems.
I want to entertain a motion, go to executive session. First by Mr. Roberts, Buck Roberts, second by Mr. Stewart. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? We stand adjourned.
Motion to come out of executive session?
First by Mr. Stewart, second by Mr. Buck Roberts, say we come out of executive session. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? In executive session, we heard a... From city manager, assistant city manager, and city attorney, personnel matter regarding the court system, and at this time, we do not have any type of action at this time. I want to entertain a motion to adjourn. First by Mr. Stewart, second by Mr. Lockridge. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? We stand adjourned.